Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this Region 12 Board of Education meeting, February 27, 2017. Rebecca, can you take attendance? Please.
Anthony Amato.
Here.
Valerie Anderson. Alan Brown.
Here.
Gregory Cava. Rebecca Devine, I'm here. Michelle Gora. James Hirschfield.
Here.
Stephanie Koenig. Jennifer Pody. Lisa Rousch.
Here.
Michael Sinatra.
Here.
Peter Tagley.
Here.
All right, so we have four missing. Valerie, Greg. Oh, I'm sorry. There she comes. Well, she was not here, but three missing. Greg, Michelle, and Stephanie. All right, thank you. Opportunity for the public to comment on the agenda items. Anyone who'd like to address the board? All right, not seeing anyone. I'll move on. Consent agenda. Item three. Approval admitted to the business meeting, February 6, 2017, and the notice regarding the field trip to the Science Museum, Freedom Trail, Quincy Market, Boston, Mass. on June 8. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing no one, the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. The report of the chair. I have nothing special to report tonight, except that things are moving along. I think we're having a good school year. So I'll go on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Castino.
Yes, hi, everyone. Good evening. As far as correspondence, there really isn't anything in particular. Personnel, we have two appointments. Kimberly Knapp at the front entrance door here, and Colin Sullivan, the media communications assistant. Is Colin here? There he is. Welcome, Colin.
Can you hear him?
Yes, we're happy to have you.
Hi.
And resignations. We have Autumn Jensen, who resigned from the front entrance, and she's at WPS now, and Alexa Massey, who resigned. She's the media communication gal who used to be there, and now she's working. Is she working in Boston?
She's at MIT.
She's at MIT, so... So, good luck, Colin. You have a hard act to follow, but we hear great things about you. So, and I just want to first thank all of the staff, and parents, and volunteers who made Saturday's Minds in Motion so successful. We had over 145 students, 80 parents. The place was hopping. Excellent, excellent workshops. We had drumming. We had cooking. We had razzamatazz, dancing. We had Legos. Comcast, I'm sorry, Charter was here for a three-hour session with the kids to show them how to film and edit. They had their car here, their truck. The kids were out there talking as kids were filming. It was really exciting, and it was just wonderful. We had a guest speaker for the parents, who everyone loved. And, you know, one of the things that makes me very happy is that Minds in Motion, we brought it here last year. It's a Connecticut association of the gifted program. And last year, I had a group of volunteers, and I worked with them. This year, they did it without me. So that sustainability is something that's so important, and just, you get a good feeling. So those volunteers were Brooke Faison, Julie King, Michelle Maniffe, Paula Conway, and Michelle Franklin, and they did a fabulous job. I mean, it was really wonderful. So I just want to thank everyone, and thank all the kids who came, and it was just really, really, a great day. So that is my report.
All right, anything for the superintendent? Peter?
I would just like to recommend to Pat that I know there were one or two meetings held before 5:00 during the day. And I think one was Valerie's chair, one meeting. Didn't you have a meeting? I saw one or two or three.
Finance committee?
And I was just, if it is so, I would just like to mention the fact that it's better to hold our meetings after 5:00. So if the public wants to attend, they can attend, and it makes it easier for those board members that are working. There may be a reason why it was done. Fine, I don't have any problems with that. But I think from appearance sake alone, sometimes it's better to make sure our meetings at a time when people from outs, you know, from the community could attend.
Okay.
If I'm...
Yes, Valerie.
Those were the budget workshop meetings. We invited the finance chairs of the town, selectmen, whomever, board members, whomever. But we really got nitty-gritty into the numbers, and the administrators attended. So it's usually better to do those workshops during regular business hours before 5:00. And then we had a business meeting at 5:00, a finance committee meeting. So normally, we would have those before this meeting.
Not a big issue with me, but I'm just...
Well, those preliminary meetings they have, and the workshops, they've always been during the day. So then, after they had the individual presentations, and they put it together, that's usually at a regular meeting, a finance meeting at 5:00. But the nuts-and-bolds presentations by the staff are usually during the day. Anything else for the superintendent? All right, then, can I have a motion, please?
Hold on, just to say...
Oh, yes, I'm trying.
We've been working really hard on that budget, and the CO personnel have been incredibly cooperative and very helpful. And Michelle has sat in on most of those, if, I think, on all of those as well. So we've not been asleep at the switch.
All right, thank you. I didn't assume so. Can I have a motion to move item 8, K-12 music David Raposo, to the next item before number 6? Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So...
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, Mr. Raposo, thank you. Welcome.
Just before Mr. Raposo speaks, I just want to do a little brief intro of what you're going to experience this evening. We do have several presentations for you. I think that you will find that there are tremendous, exciting things happening in our district. First, you're going to hear from Mr. Raposo, and he is going to talk about the K-12 music curriculum, and actually show you some of the things that are happening in the classroom. So he'll have a video production as well. Then you will hear from students, current Chapag High School students, and Mr. Spear. And they're going to talk to you about some exciting things happening in two courses, entrepreneurship and investing. And so get your notes out, because you might learn some real important tips. And finally, you're also going to hear from Mrs. Files, and she's going to talk to you about technology in the district. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Raposo. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us this evening, me this evening, on behalf of the music department. Over the summer, we had the good fortune of working on our curriculum to attempt to align at K-12, and to bring in the new content standards. One of the things that we tried to do as a department during those summer meetings is to bring forth and bring forward the things that we found really important that are going to align with the curriculum, and also help our students move along and learn all the things that are crucial to not only performance, but the process. We are performance-based. Often, the public sees us to put on concerts at the various schools, but the process is what we were really concerned with, and trying to hit those key topics. And what I'd like to present for you today, first off, is we kind of aligned it with Black History Month, because in our national standards, having, relating our, what we do to history and culture, and also to have the component of creating and composing music. That's one of the hardest things to do in a band class or in a chorus class, is to have our students writing music. They're often reproducing things that are, these existing compositions. But to give the students the good fortune of getting a chance to create is really powerful and nerve-wracking. So the video that we put forth today will show you a little bit of what we're doing with regard to vocal music and instrumental music.
It's pretty cool, right? Yeah.
So this next part, what we really, when I was talking about the curriculum earlier, going through and having this basic tune written by Duke Ellington, C. J. M. Blues. And the students in 5th grade, 5th grade band, all the way through high school are learning this blues at various times. And what we're doing is taking the blues scale and using that particular six-note collection of pitches in order to almost paint by numbers, so they're able to go through and fit their melodic ideas into this form, this 12-bar form. So it's a really fun thing to watch, because they're initially very, very nervous and scared, and that's excellent. Because from that comes this, you can never be wrong, so long as you're in this, like, in that, within that scale, and then to see them develop and grow is really exciting. So this is the head, the melody.
One, two, and go. Charlie solo now, please. One, two, tie, go.
Improvising just lets you express your creativity in music, and just lets you go all out in front of a crowd, in front of anyone, even by yourself. It just lets you find what musical style fits you, and makes you understand why you like music.
There's something incredibly mysterious about the creative process, and improvisation is the transposition of that mental stream into something audible and tangible.
Improv is like, you don't have to worry about really, like, making everything perfect and on point. You can kind of just be you, make whatever you do, and make something great out of it.
I think improv is the ability to separate your own creativity and make something that's your own, and while staying with the rhythm and staying on track with everyone else, you get to kind of carve out a piece of your own mind and make it into your own sound.
Two, one, two, and go.
The really great thing and exciting thing as a teacher is to be able to see the progression and how they go from that initial head in 5th grade, and they're going through and playing the melody. And then in 6th grade, when they just started, that group that played, those middle school students, and they'd worked for basically two classes on learning the scale, and then starting to develop ideas and formulate their own thoughts. And to see that go through as a teacher is awesome. And then to pay each of those students, you know, $20 before they went through and made all those statements, it works. So I didn't do that. So, but their answers were authentic, and literally on the spot, hey, guys, I'm going to ask you this question, and they spoke from the heart, and that I find really powerful as well. And to see the development is awesome. So if you ever have any questions about it, or if you ever want to come to our classes and check out what we're doing, I would love to have you come in, because the kids are excited to learn, and they're excited about music, and we want to keep that going and keep that up, because it's a really great place, a really great school, with a lot of great students. And come on down, you know, anytime, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job, David.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. I'd like to share one quick story, and I'm going to make you laugh. So I went down to the elementary school, 3rd grade class, to hang out with the teacher and to see what the students were doing. And I sat and played a circle game with the 3rd graders, and they'd been working on some rhythms and things. And one of the 3rd grade boys leaned over, he said, "You smell nice," which I thought was funny in and of itself. And then he said, "You have the same haircut as my dad. He cuts his hair back, all the way back here." And I've been working on this for the last 45 years, of getting this awesome hairstyle. And I see those students there at the school, watching the video and seeing that boy there. It just made me, reminded me of how funny that was, because when my wife and I and kids were talking at the dinner table, it was, that evening, it was really funny. So again, thank you very much, and I hope you have a really great night.
Thank you. Doing a great job with the music department. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, next is item 6, student presentation. Entrepreneurships and Investing Courses, John Spear.
We're just switching computers at this point, and then the girls will log in. So entrepreneurship was a pilot program this fall.
Excuse me, would you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm John Spear. I'm a business and math educator here at the high school.
Okay.
And so we piloted a new program, an entrepreneurship course, at this fall. And these two young ladies were in the first course, and were outstanding students, and came up with some brilliant ideas, solved some problems that currently are unsolved, and have a bright future if they choose to enter the field of business or entrepreneurship. Later, when they're done, Armin will come up and talk about a final project we work on in investing class, where we cover everything from stocks to bonds to mutual funds to college loans, to budgeting, salaries, career paths. So he will focus on the final project in that class, and all the decisions he had to make, and the defense of those decisions, and why he made them.
First, you have to switch to computers. Excuse me, John, how many students do you have in your investing class?
Currently, I have 21. I believe I have two sections of entrepreneurship this half. I have 17 in one section and 24 in the other. So 41 entrepreneurship students this semester, and I had 22, 23 last semester.
And what grades are those primarily, those students?
9 through 12. It's a heterogeneous mix of all the grade levels in all those classes. We also teach Introduction to Business. There's not any Introduction to Business presentations tonight, but we do offer Introduction to Business as another business course. The two girls presenting tonight, Erin is actually a freshman, and Kathleen is a senior. And they work together, so that was a group that they were in. So we don't discriminate by age in the business department.
Okay, so the people you really want to hear from will now come on.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. As you already heard, my name's Kathleen, and this is Erin. And we just completed the entrepreneurship class for last semester that Mr. Spear teaches, and so we'll be giving a presentation on that class. So a little bit about the class. The main goal of the class is to learn... The main goal of the class is to learn what it would be like to actually start a business. So the main objectives are to discover business ownership, management of supply, and distribution channels, creation of marketing plans, developing costing, pricing structures, and about promotion and selling.
Hi. So the skills that we gained in this class would be, is we learned how to do a high-level presentation. It also helps us practice with our public speaking skills because there was a lot of presentations throughout the course. We also now know a lot about business terms, things going on in the business world, and also how to construct our own business. And we can apply these tools in all different classes, and...
Kathleen has something to add to that. Yeah, and this is something that I found as a senior has been really great. With senior project, we have to give a forty-five-minute presentation at the end of the year. So I think it's really valuable for students as young as freshmen to start working on these skills. So some of our favorite projects were, mine was the one on the left, and that's called Up, Up &amp; Away. And what we were tasked with was creating a paper airplane. And we had certain guidelines that we had to follow, such as a specific width and length. But the main focus was to work on marketing. So as someone who could not create a paper airplane well at all, I knew that I had to really be good at presenting and selling this to my peers. Each classmate was given a vote as to which one they thought would fly the furthest. My group got the most votes, but our plane came in last. So yeah, Erin's actually won. So yes.
So to introduce my favorite project that we did, it was basically learning how to develop an advertising market plan and choosing the group that you think would be most likely to have use or buy your product. So this is an example on the board of actually Kathleen's. And you can see, we sent out data throughout to different ages, different grade levels, outside of the school, in the school. And basically, we got results to see how the market plan worked. They got a summary of our product, and they said if they thought it was useful for maybe a nurse or a teacher. And we wanted to see if the way we would advertise it kind of corresponds with how we planned, or if we didn't do maybe a poor job on that. But we had a good description on the project.
So the next thing that we do is going to be a presentation on a project that Erin and I actually did. So basically, we were tasked with trying to solve a problem in the real world. So the problem that Erin and I tried to solve was food allergies and preventing potential allergic reactions to foods.
So when looking for a solution, we wanted something efficient for handling with emergencies and also prevention of those emergencies. So we went with, as you can see, there's a button to dial 911 if there was a reaction, and it also has a location tracker in it. We designed that in case they can't contact anyone on the phone, or they need immediate assistance.
I'm sorry, you designed this?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
And that's also an EpiPen, and it has a food allergen tester. So you can stick it in your food to see whether or not it has your allergy in it. And there would be some program to see what it would be looking for.
So what do customers currently buy to meet this need and solve this problem? So currently, as many of you probably know, there's an epinephrine injection that people can use in case of emergency. However, there is currently no way to potentially detect potentially life-threatening allergens, and no EpiPens currently have a GBS tracker that would notify 911.
So there are fifteen million Americans that suffer from food allergies, and we thought this would be a good way to kind of advertise and aim in America because there's a very large portion. And it could also go worldwide because we found that, I believe the number was like thirteen million or ten million Europeans also have food allergies, and it's spreading. So we could also aim this at everyone because if they're looking to prevent such as a food that they think they might have a reaction to, or they don't really want to eat in their diet, they can use our product.
So in terms of marketing, we plan on targeting doctors. We think that if we are able to sell to them directly, it's more likely for them to promote it to their patients. So that's one of our target markets. And then the other place that we can market it through is drugstores.
When determining how we should market our product, we were thinking we could show it through commercials, because electronics are very popular nowadays, and it'd pop up in ads, apps, all different places. We were also gonna do posters, kind of like billboards along the highways, or complimentary gifts during game shows, and have doctors kind of promote it.
So the slogan for our product is "Allergies, No Problem." Thought it was short and direct.
So the cost of our product would be two hundred dollars, and we wanted it to be a fair pricing where we could make a profit, which we chose to have seventy dollars. And we did some research, and we found that the cost to make an EpiPen would be thirty dollars. And to add the other products that come with it, such as the sensor and the button with the location tracker, we thought that would come out to about a hundred dollars, making our total two hundred.
So where would we sell our product? We figured that it would be best sold online as that's something that everyone uses nowadays. We also figured that'd be very successful in medical stores and selling it at medical trade shows where doctors could actually see the model and get an idea of what it is.
So as I said before, to promote our product, we would do advertisements on TV or on the internet, and also introducing it through popular television shows, such as Dr. Oz, because it's a health show. And we can kind of show that it's gonna come big in the health world if something so popular is being shown through it. And also Steve Harvey, because it's a talk show, and it's one of those places where they might be giving away prizes or stuff like that to promote our product. And that's basically it.
So this is our ad that we would use. This is our work site, and thank you.
Thank you. I will say, ladies, that your presentation certainly has helped your public speaking skills. You both present very well. Keep it up.
Just to clarify, the purpose of the project was idea creation. We didn't actually build a prototype of this, you know? But the idea is created, and if you found certain science and engineers, this is a possible solution to obviously a major problem.
Someone wants to fund it.
Yeah, Kickstarter.
Yeah, to get on Dr. Oz. Thank you very much. That was very impressive. Oh, we have more?
We had a whole bunch tonight.
Oh, okay. And Michelle felt bad that she's missed the presentations.
Armin has a couple of links in his slideshow, so I'll just work the computer while he presents.
Do we need to approve this calendar?
Hi, I'm Armin, and I took Mr. Spear's investing class during the second semester of my sophomore year, so that would be last year. And I really enjoyed the class. I felt it was very useful, and it has helped me in my personal life. I have a little story about that I'll share at the end. So what the project was, is we had to plan for our retirement. So right out of college, or beginning of your senior year of college, to different stages throughout your life. So we had to pick different stocks we would invest in and other things like mutual funds and ETFs. So what a mutual fund is, is basically it's a group of stocks that you put your money into that, and then if the average price of those stocks goes up, you earn money. If the average price of those stocks goes down, you lose money. So it's safer than investing in a specific stock. So my savings goal for age twenty-one to twenty-five was twelve thousand dollars, and I picked a somewhat average rate of return, so eight point five percent per year. That's nothing too crazy, but it's nothing too low either. So with my employer match of seventy dollars, I would have to put in a hundred forty dollars each month, which isn't anything too ridiculous, because I'm sure you could all save a hundred forty dollars each month. So if you click on the calculator, it should work. Oh, no. So if you plug in the numbers, twelve thousand dollars and current savings balance of zero, eight point five percent per year, and four years to save, it should come out around two hundred and ten dollars. There we go, two hundred and ten dollars and seventy-eight cents per month, and seventy dollars of that is with the employer match. So one of the funds I picked was VGCHX, and you might be wondering, what are those letters? So that's the ticker symbol. When you're buying a stock, you're not gonna go out and, obviously, that stands for a long string of words, but, so they shorten it to just those three or four letters, and that's what you look for. So this fund, it's great. It's had a ten-year average of eleven percent per year, which is above average. Average return on investment would be probably around seven to eight percent. And another important factor is the expense ratio. So that's point thirty-six. So an expense ratio is basically for every dollar you earn, they take thirty-six cents out. You might be thinking, that's... Yeah. Okay. So they take a point three-six of each cent. And you might be thinking, that's not a lot. But when you get to investing millions and millions of dollars, it adds up. Hopefully. Hopefully, we all will be. So twenty-five to forty. So as you get older and closer to retirement, you want to invest in safer investments. So when you're twenty, you might be able to invest more of your money in more dangerous, more risky funds. But when you're getting closer to retirement, you don't want to risk losing all of your money. So you want to put it somewhere safer. So that's where I went. So I had a savings goal of two hundred thousand dollars by age forty, again, with a pretty average return on investment of eight point five percent. And with a hundred forty-five-dollar company match, I would only have to save two hundred ninety-five dollars a month, which isn't too much. So the funds that I picked for years twenty-five to forty are VDC, which is Vanguard Consumer Staples. So Vanguard is the fund managing company, and the Consumer Staples describes what area it's in. So Consumer Staples, that includes a lot of things that you would generally buy. So it has companies like tobacco companies and just food companies and just general consumer products that lots of people buy. So VBR, that's a small-cap value. And what a small-cap is, it's a smaller company that has more potential to earn you money, but it also has more potential to lose your money. So that fund is filled with those smaller, riskier companies. And then VHT, that is Vanguard Healthcare, and that fund is in the healthcare sector. And I picked that as a safer investment because healthcare is not generally going to fall down. And all of these funds have generally low expense ratios and have pretty good ten-year averages. So what's important about the ten-year average is you don't want to look at a one- or two-year average, because they might have a really good year, but then the next year, they might just drop. So you want to be invested in for the long run, not for the short term. So forty to fifty-five, that was the next stage. That was about when you could go into retirement. So my goal was eight hundred thousand dollars. And you could retire pretty comfortably with that. So again, an average rate of return, eight point five percent, and monthly savings goal, three hundred thirty-two dollars. It's higher now because I figured you're older, you probably paid off your house, you have a more stable job with a higher income, so you should be able to afford to save a little bit more. And the funds I picked were VGLT, which is Vanguard Long-Term Government Bond ETF. So that's extremely safe, because it's bonds that are given to you by the government. So you're invested in those. It won't earn too much money, but it's a very safe investment, so you're not going to lose anything. And then the next ETF I chose is VTV, which is a Vanguard Value ETF. And it's mostly invested in the financials and healthcare sectors, but it has lots of like smaller holdings to diversify it. So what's so important about diversity in these funds is if you pick a fund that's only in, let's say, the supermarket sector, but then supermarkets in general go down because, I don't know, Amazon starts shipping food to your door, then the whole fund will go down. But if you have a diverse fund, it'll go down, but it won't go down as much because there are other investments to kind of prop it up and keep it stable. So the third one is VSS. It had a very low expense ratio at point one-seven, so it's taking of every dollar, point one-seven cents, which is pretty good. And it's mostly invested in European markets, and I picked that one for when you're older, because if the American markets, like the NASDAQ and S&amp;P 500, drop, you want to have investments elsewhere so that you don't lose all of your money. And that's it for my presentation. But...
Impressive.
I have a little story.
Go ahead.
How this class helped me in my life. So last year, you might remember, I think it was around springtime, the Chinese markets were falling, and my dad, one day, came home and said, oh, man, I had fifty thousand dollars, let's say, invested in my 401K. And he came home, two hours later, three hours later, he had forty-one thousand. And I said, let's go see your financial advisor. I've been learning about this stuff. Maybe I can help. And we found out that he was invested in a fund called Superaggressive China Fund.
Oh, gosh.
And as we all know, the Chinese markets fell, so that's why he lost ten percent of his money in a couple hours.
Well, I was glad you were there to help him.
Yeah.
Well, that was very interesting, very...
Inspiring.
Yeah, and complex, a lot of work, I can see. A lot of examination of different funds.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Are you a senior?
No, I'm a junior. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but Mr. Spear has definitely inspired me to go into the business area.
Excellent. You could do workshops at lunch for the teachers.
Remember us all when you become famous. Valerie?
I just want you to know, during your presentation, I was flipping through Wells Fargo, our retirement for certified, I'm sorry, classified employees that we sit in in on their portfolio. You did better than they did.
Thank you.
As Mr. Raposo said, you could drop into investing class whenever you want. The door's right there. It's sixth period, all right?
Thank you very much. Very interesting. Thank you very much. Very interesting.
Thank you, girls.
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on. Item seven, technology update. Karen Fyles.
Okay, that is gonna be a really, really hard act to follow. Um, wow, okay. I'll try.
Thank you.
So I am the, uh, the, uh, Director of Technology and I'm going to have the least technical presentation tonight. So I'm handing out a, uh, a handout for you that Sue's gonna pass around. But, um, as I prepared for tonight's presentation, I spent, uh, quite a lot of time reflecting on where we were in regards to technology just four and a half years ago when I first spoke to you in August of two thousand twelve. Um, if you recall, at that time, Network Administrator Vic Vasinsy and I came before you with a map of the Chapag complex. And if you think back to that time, there, we came to you because we needed to upgrade the infrastructure of Chapag because we could not get internet in large parts of the building, namely the science labs. So our students at that time had access to computers through a single lab in the elementary schools. And, uh, uh, in the classrooms, they had maybe one desktop computer to work with. Um, middle school students were preparing for the start of a new pre-engineering program called Project Lead the Way. We were very excited about that. And our high school classes were still working around scheduling with only two available sign-out computer labs, which were used mostly for low-end skills such as word processing at the time. Our teachers were predominantly using desktop computers that did not allow for their use during PLCs or data team meetings. And, um, they couldn't take them outside of school, so they weren't using the same computers in school that they were using at home. Smartboards were new and we were planning for the installation of the first ones at our, at our K-five schools. Our communication system, including the website and email system, were cumbersome at best. We have come a long way and it happened in large part because of the support of this board, which took the goals of the Long-Term Strategic Plan and invested in the development of a modern, robust architecture and the digital learning tools that allowed for the transformation of our schools. What does this transformation look like? Our students in grades two through twelve now have access to digital resources at all times through the One-to-One Chromebook Program. And the teachers are using that access for creative, real-time learning with things such as primary sources for research and adaptive, skill-based software to make learning more personalized. Collaboration between students, teachers, and administrators is commonplace now through the use of digital tools such as Google Apps for Education, Hapara, and the newest addition, Schoology. World Language and Music Class, Classes now record students speaking and playing music, music for assessment and practice within their school day. And math students work with interactive problem-solving programs such as GeoGebra. Students work through Khan Academy, using PSAT data to create their own learning plans for SAT preparation. And student work is now electronically documented using digital portfolios and folders in all departments. Teachers have laptops that they plan for and deliver their instruction with and that accompanies them to all their PLC meetings and professional development. This has provided for equity among our teachers in that they have the tools they need to, uh, ex, um, support strong instruction in the classrooms. Access to PSAT data through the College Board allows teachers to examine aggregate data and for item and error analysis to better prepare our students for the SAT. Teacher goals and evaluation now include collections of data and evidence of student learning held in digital portfolios for future reflection. Our classrooms are equipped with interactive whiteboards and we house multiple special-purpose labs at Chapag for high-end technologies such as robotics, computer programming, digital art, CAD, graphic design, and video editing. New subjects are being developed each year for students with that technology, including sound design, which David Raposa teaches, a class in music that allows students to electronically manipulate sound, mobile app design, and next year, wearable technologies. Our elementary students are engaging in hands-on learning experiences with our new STEM teacher, who's ensuring we dive into the next-generation science standards prepared. Two years ago, we built a state-of-the-art video production studio and editing lab, largely made up by state grant funding. And today, we have middle school students who recently returned as winners of the White House Student Film Challenge. We have a team of teachers who work together as tech champions, who help research and test new technologies for use in our schools and then train their peers in their use. Attending these monthly meetings can be invigorating as they share with each other new ideas and tools for supporting this digital learning environment for our schools. And their work has been invaluable to me as they've tried and piloted many programs that ultimately we determined were not a good fit for us. Today's classrooms in Region Twelve are rich with digital resources and our teachers are so creative in constantly looking for better ways to engage our kids and provide them with multiple modes of instruction. I'm so proud of our teachers and how far they have come in four years in truly transforming the experience of our students. On any given day, you can walk into any classroom across any of our schools and you can see students making movies, engaging collaboratively on a piece of writing, excited, excitingly participating in Google Hangouts or Skypes with professionals, or printing three-D models of designs they've created. This is the transformation that we were looking for when we first spoke. Now, of course, as you all know, technology is constantly evolving and we will always need to be cognizant of staying abreast of what is new and also what comes up as challenges. Currently, for example, we are working very hard to become compliant with the new Connecticut PA dash one-eight-nine Student Data Privacy Legislation passed last June and enacted October first. I am part of a statewide technology group that is working with the legislature to address the concerns brought up with this new law by the state, uh, school districts across the state. We are active members of a number of professional organizations, including the International Society for Technology and Education, ISTI, the Consortium for School Networking, COSIN, the Connecticut Digital Learning Council, among many others, to ensure we stay active in advocacy as well as education. We continue to work towards improving the use of technology for communication with our community. In today's world, there cannot be only one means of communication. So we continue to work on better ways to reach out to the great things happening in our schools. We have both print and electronic newsletters, email blasts, websites, and active YouTube channel featuring the business of the region as well as spotlights and classroom work. You saw one tonight that was prepared by one of our media techs, Alexa. We are working to become more active on social media and inviting the press into our schools. We saw the power of this effort with our video production students who had airtime on all the major broadcasts, it, uh, uh, major news broadcasts in the state, including television, radio, and print. Now, it may take winning at the White House to get them to cover our small school, but we have certainly extended the welcome for many other topics as well. The addition of Schoology at Chapag is a means to streamline communication with parents and make providing homework and class resources more efficient. This in, this initiative is just beginning and I hope to report on its success at a future presentation. Associate Principal Lori Ferrera has worked tirelessly with the teachers at Chapag to build out a new section of the Chapag website detailing the academic program at our school. If you haven't had the opportunity to visit this yet, I encourage you to do so. You would be hard-pressed to find another school in the state that has detailed so much of their academic programming on the website for public consumption. The handout that I have provided for you documents the progress that we have made towards the plan we initially set in two thousand twelve based on the goals determined in the Long-Term Strategic Plan. You will see that we have achieved them all, although a few were ultimately let go after piloting. NWEA, for example. I have included updates to each of the goals that were established at the district level and included the start of where, what we see as next steps in each area. These ideas are preliminary as any plan must align with the district's long-term plan currently being developed. We do know that as we look to the future of technology in Region Twelve, it becomes less of a distinct and separate topic, but rather interwoven with the day-to-day operations of the school district. Last year, ISTI released new standards for students that look at technology as a tool for aspirational change in our students. Teachers, teaching students to be critical thinkers, empowered learners, and to think computationally are where we are headed with these new guidelines. A key component of this is the maker movement and the addition of maker spaces in our schools. Makers explore, tinker, use trial and error, and they build with their hands. All skills that are critical to the future where flexibility and innovative thinking will be the key to success. We want our students to be makers and to do that, we need to add these flexible spaces to all of our schools. We continue to look at emerging technologies and plan pilots to explore their use in our schools. And we continue to account for the refresh cycle for our equipment to ensure that we do not stagnate. We continue to search for creative ways to find time for our teachers to collaborate on curriculum and best practices with digital tools. We have come a long way in meeting the goals put forward with the Long-Term Strategic Plan. And I look forward to seeing the goals put forth in the new plan and ensuring that we continue to work towards them. Thank you again for your continued support of our students and staff and this great learning community.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Any questions?
Yeah, does anyone have any questions? Valerie?
Yes.
Or comments?
A couple. Um, this is fantastic and I'm, I'm your prize Luddite, I guess. Um, but yes, I see how it's become effortless and we're all becoming more comfortable and, uh, it's not just the means to an end, but it's, it's all integrated. It's wonderful. Um, just a couple of questions. And I've heard this phrase before, but, you know, I'm too old to really understand it. Wearable technology. What is that?
Wearable technology is, it's, it's a whole industry. Have you ever heard of like the Apple Watch or?
Yeah, yeah.
It's all the stuff that sort of is incorporated with, um, parts of, there's, there's different pieces of it, but things that you wear, health, there's a lot of things in the health industry and biotechnology that's sort of the Fitbit, things like that. Um, and Sheila Gambino, who we have on staff here, fabulous, um, is actually, has actually written the wearable technology that is used by, um, at, what used to be called Education Connection. So she will be teaching that next year.
Okay. And if I might, um... How are we doing with the bring-your-own-device, um, concept now that we have proliferation of Chromebooks and, uh, everyone has a laptop?
You would be surprised, actually. It's very interesting to me how as we've gone through the grade levels, many of our juniors and seniors have actually purchased MacBooks. So we have more of them than you would think. Um, but we do still have most of our students using the Chromebook. It's still by far the largest number. But it tends to be the students who are very interested, especially in graphics or art. Um, they can't do the same types of things on the Chromebook that they can do on a full-fledged laptop and so they, they tend to purchase them and still... But the BYOD works in that it allows the students, our platforms are all web-based. Google Apps for Education, Hapara, Schoology, they're all web-based, so they work on any device. So if a child brings their own computer, they can operate exactly the same as anyone who's using a Chromebook. The only time that we do not use, uh, BYOD, um, technology is during standardized testing. Or if there are certain assessments that are done in the classroom because the Chromebooks are actually, there's apps on the Chromebook that allow that to be administered.
And one more, if I might. I, I was, in your presentation during the budget, um, workshops, I was impressed with the fact that we don't give Chromebooks to the K-ones.
We don't.
And I appreciate that.
I, yeah.
Can you elaborate a bit more of what we don't do for?
I do not. I see Chromebooks as a wonderful tool for students in grades two and up. I believe that when you're working with students in the pre-K one, the two, or pre-K, K, and one, there is still a lot of, um, socialization things that need to happen and they interact better with tablets and they interact better in having more learning center-type things. Um, my tech champions have also been part of that, um, conversation and they, they do believe and they, the feedback that they give to me is that the Chromebooks are great for the older kids, but at the elementary level, working with more of an interactive tablet-type thing, they still have the opportunity to go to the computer lab and they still have options to use the computers. But it's more of a, um, social or a group activity as opposed to a one-to-one. We do have, um, iPads in Reach that, um, are used in Reach, but it's not the center of their day. So that's, that's why we're not buying Chromebook below second grade.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just had a question, Karen. You mentioned three-D design. Do we have a three-D printer?
Yes. We've had one for a few years.
I, I guess, I knew that. I was just making sure.
If you remember when Sheila, um, Sheila Gambino did a presentation on Project Lead the Way, the kids...
Key rings. Yeah, I have it. All right. Sorry I asked. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work. All right. Uh, next is item nine, I believe. Tuition in Students and Multiple Student Family Dis, Tuition Discount. Carolyn Dwyer. Welcome, Carolyn.
Do you all have the handouts? Good evening. My name is Carolyn Dwyer and I focus on marketing and events for the town of Bridgewater and also serve as the Burnham Schools PTO President. Uh, thank you for allowing me to present this evening. Our first selectman, Curtis Reed, um, just had knee surgery. So he sends his regrets. He would have liked to be here as well. Before I get to the crux of why I'm here, we wanted to share some good news. We've had a very good baby year in Bridgewater. We have twelve, uh, new children born this year so far, I guess, this past year, so it's done unless any move in. Um, in addition to Region Twelve's count for this fall's kindergarten, ner, or kindergarten, which I think stands at ten, um, we also have a homeschool child who's committing, um, for next year. So we're waiting to see how that shakes out. We also have a child, um, who was looking at, well, the parents, were looking at the school as a tuition-in opportunity, but, um, because with the tuition and the special needs are on the own parent, on the parent's dime, um, they have found that to be cost prohibitive, so we won't be seeing them. Um, but we do have two other prospects in our timeline for next year's kindergarten that I'm tracking. Uh, I think I've said this before, not to sound too creepy, but we do have a database of children that we are, um, tracking through our town so that we can monitor, you know, as people come and go. Uh, so anyway, as you are aware, we've been looking for creative ways to bring new students into the region. While much of the focus has been on the high school Ag-STEM program, we have been working to attract people to our local elementary school so that those students create a pipeline for future stability in the region. We are working against a few barriers of success over the past few years. One was the lack of an after-school care, um, for our students, especially for working families. But now we're going on our second year of successfully launching that ACE After Care Enrichment Program. And we are pleased, um, not only is it growing, but we have now students from both Bridgewater and Roxbury utilizing the program. Um, other barriers that we're still seeing for people moving to the region, um, and you already know a lot of them, are the economic issues at the state level and those are out of our control. Um, we are working, however, with our Planning and Zoning Commission in Bridgewater in hopes that we can change the regulations to allow for more, a percentage of the property, um, that could then be utilized for apartments, et cetera. Um, that would help older people either stay in their homes and maybe rent to younger, a younger family on the property. Um, it might also help a younger family subsidize their expenses by possibly allowing an older person to live in an apartment. So we are looking forward, um, to seeing those changes coming out of the Planning and Zoning Commission in Bridgewater in the near future. Um, another barrier to success has been the amount of real estate inventory in our small communities at the price point that works for young families. We continue to work with our local Realtors and we're in the process of coordinating a town-wide open house at the end of March, early April, that will feature real estate open houses, Burnham School Open House and Tours, and other family-friendly town activities. Lastly... Lastly, and the reason that I'm here this evening, is to update you on the tuition-in program. A few years back, in anticipation of a period of lower enrollment, we had asked the board to examine the tuition-in rate. Then, excuse me, this board voted to lower the tuition-in rate to $7,500 per student. Using the model of the hotel industry where empty hotel rooms are utilized at often lower rates, the idea was that it was better to fill our empty seats with students who would pay the region than to leave those seats empty. It is important to understand the financials of this offer. For every $7,500 that the region takes in at Burnham, the other two region towns actually get more cash than we do for our own efforts, and those are shown to you in the, in the grid that I put together. So it's a win-win for all of the towns. While this is an exciting concept, in looking at our closest area competitors, we still have work to do. Our focus has been on private elementary schools at the comparable price structures in our neighboring communities. As you can see from the handout, not only is the price to tuition in about $2,000 or more lower per student for those schools, but they also offer multiple student discount rates. This means that if you have more than one child attending, you would receive a discount to your tuition, the more children you send. In order to aid families and hopefully make us more competitive, last year, the Selectmen of Bridgewater voted to offer scholarships for students taking advantage of the tuition-in program to the tune of $1,500. The Burnham PTO also offered a $1,000 scholarship. Those monies would help make it more in line with our competitors. We've had one family take advantage of it from New Milford, and they're pleased with their experience. However, other families are touring, and just last week, we had two families tour, and one of those families has three children. While they would like to move to the region in the long term, in the short term, they are looking for a way to integrate their children into the Region 12 school system. Our other competitors not only offer a lower entry price, but they also offer financial aid, especially for larger families. This is something that we would like you, as a board, to investigate. It is our belief that every family that comes into our region, whether it be from Sherman, New Milford, Brookfield, or hopefully at some point, some of the AgSTEM sending towns, that all of them will help sustain the long-term viability of Region 12. We believe that we have to hit this problem, not just from one angle, but from many. I have a few families on my prospect list that are waiting to hear if there any, if there will be any additional financial help that the region can offer them. That is why tonight I bring this issue to you. We would like this board to look at a few items. One, would you be amenable to offering a multi-student discount for families who tuition in, not just to Burnham, but to any school within Region 12? And two, would you, we would also ask that you reexamine your tuition rate and consider lowering it, lowering it to compare to the area competitors, even if it is for only a trial period. This would allow for a huge media buzz and allow us to gain more momentum. And then we can divert some of our town and PTO scholarships towards the financial aid that some of these families desperately need. No one has a crystal ball, and we do not know what the state will do come spring, but it is our opinion that we need to have other possibilities for revenue streams besides just one. We thank you for your time. We hope you will quickly take up our requests. Please feel free to reach out to Curtis Reed at Town Hall or myself if you have any questions or need any more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Appreciate it. Any questions? Yes, Valerie?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This hard work, and it really is great to know that all of these irons are in the file, fire. Have you had a lot of interaction because of the way you're situated there? You really are very, obviously share a border with New Milford and Brookfield across the bridge. Have you had any conversations with Brookfield?
Not yet.
Yeah, are they, do you find them, that you think they would be receptive? Are they a natural fit, say, more than New Milford?
Interestingly, we're getting more calls from New Milford families. I think what we're seeing in the short term is with Pettibone closing and their close proximity to Burnham School, and all those families, if you're familiar with the area that live up behind the mobile up on Second Hill, there are a lot of communities up there, that's where we're getting most of our calls. And I, from what we're hearing, that there's overflow up at Northville, and families are not happy with the larger class sizes, and that's something that Burnham's always been able to offer, the smaller class sizes, so it's a good fit for a lot of families. We are starting to get some calls from Brookfield, one-offs here and there, so that's good. But I think that is something the first selectman and I have discussed, is discussing more options with Danbury and Brookfield to see if we can get some creative ideas going.
Is transportation an issue as well?
Yes.
So, I mean, in the best of all possible worlds, we would decrease our tuition and then have buses available if, I mean?
We didn't, we didn't ask for that, but sure.
I'm not saying that.
Thank you for that suggestion. You know, one of the things we have thought about is, you know, at some point, if we get to the point where we've got a fair number of New Milford students, it may make sense, you know, in that little turnaround there, because we've done it before for, for kids that live on the border there, we have a few that do, on the Bridgewater-New Milford border, you know, could those kids hop on there? So that might be a safe place for kids every day to hop on. And they are coming from Sherman, which is going right through New Milford as well. So, you know, I think there's a lot of, I think we're just scratching the surface. You know, I feel like we're just getting our feet under us on this one. So we'll see. But I do feel, you know, and to my points that I made, you know, I feel like we're a little bit inhibited just because of the price point.
And I'm not saying anything about offering a bus, by the way, because these are massively expensive things.
Yes, I've sat through many of your meetings.
But it's just good to know what, what the friction areas are. Does New Mil, what does New Milford charge to tuition in a kid if you were going to have a kid go there?
11,000 plus.
Really? Wow. And Brookfield?
I think they were 13.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
So we're half of that.
So, we are. I mean, that's the thing, is, is we are, but we're not competing against them.
Right.
Because we're basically a public school competing in a private sector right now.
Right.
And we have the, we, you know, as we always tout ourselves, we are private schools with a public school heading. We got the best of both worlds with our size and our small communities, and the attention that we get from the teachers, the one-on-one and all of that. So, you know, that's appealing to a lot of people.
What is the most important issue right now would be to have a discount for multiples or decrease the tuition?
The latter.
Yeah.
I mean, multiples will help me, especially with the families that I'm encountering who are waiting to hear, and we've, you know, we've brought it to our town marketing group, and, you know, the consensus was bring it to Region 12 and see if Region 12 can help with the multiples issue. But yes, I mean, the 7,500 is tough, and, you know, if it was 5,500, you know, even if it was for a year, you know, we could at least have a big splash, I think. And at least we'd be even-steven with all the other ones that you see there.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure what harm you would do if it was a trial period. I mean, you're always going to have the people that say, you know, I pay whatever they think they pay per head, but again, if you use the hotel analogy, these seats are empty, and the more we fill them, and then if they end up either moving into the region or paying us from K to 12, I mean, the tuition in student we have currently in fifth grade, they plan to stay through the, through their education here. So to me, it's a win-win.
Do they understand we're not paying for high school?
They do. But high school, I think you can sell the 7,500 better than you can for a kindergarten, first-grade student, right?
Yeah.
Anything else, Valerie?
Well, I'd like Michael to ask his questions, but I think we should talk about this a lot.
Well, I, I mean, I was just going to say that I certainly think these requests can be considered by the board. What I will do is probably, what I will do is refer to a committee, probably the Finance Committee, and ask them to look at it and bring it back. And I know you said you wanted it speedily as possible, wanted an answer, but I think that's, so that we have, you know, everybody that needs to can comment on it, and then the board can consider it.
Absolutely.
Now, I'm sorry. Michael?
Thank you. A lot of interesting ideas for us to think about.
Right.
So thank you. Obviously, one of the questions that we're going to get as a board, I was hoping you can kind of help us with crafting our answer to the public on, which we get every, we got the last time around when we lowered our, our tuition, are the people who look at our pupil, pupil, purple.
Per pupil cost.
Purple, purple pupil. Per pupil expenditures as being, what, approximately $22,000 a student?
But we're over 30,000.
More than that. Over 30,000 now. And they have a hard time, the general public, of saying, okay, so that's what we're spending, and now you're bringing in outside students.
Correct.
For this discount rate, and now you want to lower the discount rate. So help us answer that, that criticism.
Well, one is, I, I think we all sort of know, even though we love to throw that, that around, that no one's really taking $30,000 every year and plunking it down, right? So we all know that. We also know that when we add more students, that number goes down. So it's in everyone's best interest, in my opinion, to add more students to our system. You know, and then I would also say, again, you know, if you look at the monies, the monies there, they're going right back to the towns. So those are monies that are offsetting anything perceived, I guess. It, to me, it's a perception game, and you just have to craft those perceptions, but, and we do hear them, you know, a fair amount, but that's what I kind of say to people.
Anthony?
Question is really more for the board in terms of process, not having been through this discussion before. When we're contemplating tuition, how do we, I assume we have to, we have to talk to the towns and the boards of finance of the towns since it, they're, they're involved in this. I mean, they're implicated, because the money's going back to them, and, and so how, what's the process there? What do we do?
I don't believe it's a.
And may I?
Yes.
I just, before we lowered the tuition, we, Bob had a formula.
Mm-hmm.
Where it was the cost per student, and that's what you paid to come in, but it was not the full cost with busing and everything else. It was approximately between 15 and $16,000. And that was, I'm going to say, two and a half, three years ago, and then I believe, I believe it was Alan or someone came with, with the thought to cut it in half. So that's how we got to 7,500.
Okay.
So that's.
The question with, with regard to the, we don't, I don't believe we need the town's authority to do this. We, we're an elected board of ed, that's why we're here. We can consult with them, there's nothing wrong with that. I don't think we need their consent. I'm not saying that we would, you know, abrogate our responsibility or do anything to offend them, but if you want to consult with them, that's fine, but you don't need their consent.
I understand that. But if, if one of the questions is, will the other towns consider doing this, that question is actually for the respective Finance Committees, not for us, because we can't make that decision. That's, we don't have that authority, the way Bridgewater did. It was their selectmen who decided.
Only for the scholarships, not?
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure I'm following what you're saying, Anthony. I'm sorry.
If the question to the board is, will the other towns consider granting scholarships to follow Bridgewater, that question is, it should be directed to the respective boards of finance, not to us, because that money goes directly to them. That's their decision, not our decision.
And?
We can control the tuition number. That I understand.
And the scholarships provided by the town, is that right?
Correct, but I'm not asking, I, I'm not, I wasn't directly asking for the other towns.
I understand.
Okay.
Just making a point.
Yes, and I agree with you, yes.
Okay.
Rebecca?
I think in regards, Michael, to the issue of responsibility of cost per head for student and concern for citizens might have in regards to this whole, you know, 30,000-plus versus 5,000 or 7,000, I think that the thing that we have to remember is that when we talk about supporting a public school within the town where we live, that's one conversation. And so if somebody lives in Danbury, they are, for part of their taxes, supporting the public school system in Danbury, whether they use it or not. And they are then making a choice to pay personally an additional amount of money to send their child to our school. So when people talk about, well, we're paying, our students are, it's over $30,000 a head, that's not what that is. It's our responsibility within this region to fund our public school, regardless of whether we have students in them or not, just like it's our responsibility to pay our taxes to help the, for the roads, for all the, all the things for which we, as members of the towns, are responsible. But if a person chooses to live on a private road, they pay an extra amount of money. They don't get a free pass for not paying the taxes to do the public roads, so I think that's something that we have to remember. Just like if somebody lives in Bridgewater, Roxbury, or Washington, and then they choose to send their child to a private school, they're still paying their taxes to support the public school system. So I think that that's something that we have to remember.
All right, thank you. Valerie?
Well.
You don't have to.
No, I, I know that. But thank you. I mean, we really do have to do something. And, and I think it's great that, you know, the town and the PTO is offering scholarship money, the other town's not so much. The need is more dire in Burnham, because you do indeed have three kids in the second grade with a staff child. And you're right about filling empty seats. My problem is that, you know, it would be a wonderful problem, but the tipping point of then maybe encouraging kids from other areas to tuition in at, say, some greatly discounted rate, that causes us to have to hire a teacher, or to put more money into a particular classroom for some particular reason. And then that's where the other towns get involved, where we really are subsidizing other kids instead of just filling a lot of empty seats.
Absolutely.
I really would, our timing is bad, though. I would really love to see us pursue a dramatic cut in this for elementary school. For, I guess we have to do it uniformly for all three primary schools. Because as it is now, WPS has one section, and they're pretty good filled sections per grade for the first time ever.
Right.
I mean, I remember when my kid went there, there were like three first grades, and on we went through the system.
Right.
And incurring extra costs is the problem.
Right.
I wish there was a way we could do it only for Burnham, because you really need the kids, and Booth and WPS are okay for now.
A lot of these, I would say, you know, because we can be flexible in our small region, I would say these are good problems to have, right? You know, the notion of hiring another teacher, you know, if, if we are so blessed that suddenly everybody floods these doors, then great, you know, then we cut it off, and we, you know, maybe we have an end date to it or something along those lines. But I know even for next year, in a way, I'm, I'm pleased, I feel like we're stopping the bleeding, both with the kindergarten class coming in, and we're only going down 11%, whereas I believe Roxbury is going down, I think, 16% for, you know, for your enrollment numbers next year. So, you know, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball. I just know that, yes, right now, we need it, and I think, again, this is more my personal opinion, just being in this region a long time and trying a lot of different things here, you know, I think we're going to get to a point where we're going to have very difficult decisions, especially come spring if this AgSTEM doesn't go through, and I just want to be well-prepared. I just want to put us in the best position to compete, because, you know, Brookfield and Danbury, they're not going to have a problem. They're building condo complexes, they've got immigrants coming in left, right, and center. I mean, you read the newspaper every day, they're going to have a lot of students in the near future, but we just got to get them north, so.
It might be helpful for the board, because we, in our budget conversations, Pat prepared the latest statistics for population, and this year we have 44 at Burnham, going down to 39.
And that's where I got the six, the 100%.
All grades. 85 at Booth now, going to 71, all grades. And Washington Primary, once again, I think this is pretty landmark, 112 going down to 102, and one section per grade for Washington Primary. But the classes are nicely divided or filled with Booth and Washington. I'm just so concerned, if we have to offer this universally, we might get a lot of more people in Washington Primary, then you have to divide a class, you have to get another teacher in there. I mean, that's kind of.
Well, and I think you could, I mean, again, I'm not on the board, but I think maybe you could put parameters around it, I'm not sure. And I know we're also going to have the hurdle of the multi-age, I mean, hurdle or perk, depending on how we spin it.
Call it a perk.
Call it a perk.
All right.
But, you know, that's going to be another challenge that's layered on us this year.
Yeah.
That's going to help us deal with the small classes for the time being, but, you know, it's something else to market and to put in our whole package, so.
Michael?
I think some of the points that, I think Anthony, you brought this up, and maybe some of the other board members touched on it, is, is our efforts to educate the other two towns too on your efforts to date, and it's wonderful, thank you for coming to give us some more information and kind of update us on where we're at. But I'm wondering if you've had any conversations yet with, if you even have a counterpart in in Washington or in Roxbury, that you've had some initial conversations with, to walk them through this information. Certainly, you know, if, if you could sell it-
Right.
The way I'm seeing it is, is a win-win for everyone.
Right.
Not just for us. And certainly the problem of declining enrollment, as we just talked about, is not unique to Bridgewater. So, you know, it would be very easy, for example, for New Milford residents who live up near Washington, to send their kids to Washington Primary.
Absolutely.
I don't think we'd be sending, turning them away if they knew about the possibility even, but I'm just wondering where we're at, if you've even had any initial conversations.
We, on, on the, well, there's two fronts, right? So the, the internal Roxbury, Bridgewater, Washington front, we did have a marketing group, which just sort of fell enough the, by the wayside. But no, I think that those are conversations we can certainly have with Barbara and Mark. There's no reason we shouldn't, especially because the, especially the financial case, it's, it's really there. I mean, we're, we're making money, we're making you money, if it works, at least on our end, so. But then externally, I think there's a lot more marketing we have to do. You know, we obviously are sensitive to the fact that there are other towns and, and, you know, how they view us sort of coming to approach their children. But, so what we're really trying to do is focus on the families that are already looking, that are looking for, and they may not be comfortable with, and you can see the three competitors, they're all religious-based schools. So if you're not, if that's not your gig or your game, and you're looking for something else that's in that price point, you know, where can you go? And so I think that we do have a great story to tell. We just need to get out there, and I just need a few more tools to be able to really tell it, so.
Okay. Anyone else?
How do you proceed? Because I would think this should maybe go to the- That this might go to the long-range planning, make it like right at the top of your agenda with recommendations? Although Jim said finance, I don't know.
We might have to do something maybe combined with finance.
It's a dollar and cents issue, right?
Yeah, it really is. The one thing that I thought was interesting, actually, that you said, Valerie, which is a little bit in contrast to what Carolyn said, is the danger of offsetting what is a very good equilibrium right now at WPS.
And, and Booth?
Well, Booth, yeah, but Booth does have a little more wiggle room, although, and, and we really are, from what we're seeing here, from what I think Carolyn might attest as, we're really seeing, you know, small numbers. There are, you know, they add up, so they are a gain for each town as far as the income that comes in, but so far, we're not getting dozens and dozens of kids. We're getting two or three here. And I remember on one of the reports that Pat gave us, or Bob gave us a month ago, it shows where the shifts are between out-of-towners and where Bridgewater kids go to Roxbury and where Washington kids go to Bridgewater. We know where the towns switch around, and even those are kind of minor, there's like the most is about six, so. But from what you're saying, WPS, right at the moment, can't even afford that. You may not be able to afford two or three more kids in a class, because then you might go over whatever our, our limit is of twenty-four, twenty-five a class. So one thing that I'd, I'd look into that isn't just dollars, you know, because, you know, it, it's a matter of explaining the whole system and realizing that even if we drop it to fifty-five hundred, I did the, the math here, Bridgewater would still get a thousand forty-five per student, Roxbury would get eighteen-seventy per student, and Washington would get twenty-five eighty-five per student, which is down, obviously comparatively from what it was at seventy-five hundred. But seeing as the income is always dispersed with parity, there might be, I don't know, I, it struck me as impossible to have the concept of allowing, the, the board approving a tuition reduction for whichever town or whichever school wanted it, as opposed to doing it across the board. In other words, could you actually say, yes, you can tuition into this elementary school for fifty-five hundred, but not to this elementary school for, that doesn't strike me as being possible. We're going to look into that, but I can't imagine. And so that one might be the sticking point for this. We'd have to really see what the wiggle room is as far as admissions for, for, for WPS, because, because the only thing that concerns me is, as you said about the Northville kids, be more likely to go to WPS than they would be, you know, it's, it's the Second Hill kids in New Milford who would go to Burnham, it's the Northville kids who would go to WPS, and there's a danger that, of that being, unless, of course, the way you do it is, that school is full. I mean, that is a way that we really do, are supposed to, we always do this, and it's in our, our policy that we revised last year, last spring, I think it was, or maybe it was last fall, that we don't really do a lot, even within our own region, we don't do a lot of moving kids from, let's say, if there's a fifth grade in Booth, which is huge, we don't necessarily just move kids to Burnham or to WPS. So in that case, maybe the logistic and the legality is that we offer the fifty-five hundred if we, if we're all, find it palatable, if it works out with the finance, the, the cost assessment in, in the towns. And then the idea is, not that we're excluding anyone in, from offering it, but that there's just no room in WPS, so if you want to pay that money, you are going to go to Booth or Burnham, because we already have a capacity at WPS. That could be the way around it, because the school always has the authority as to where it places the incoming students. And remember, too, that we already had in our, in our tuition in amount, and even in our reduction, we had the qualifications that it was at the region's final decision-
Superintendent's.
Superintendent's final discretion, and of course, there are any special ed kids who have that, a greater cost basis are not included in this, this possibility, simply because of the economic burden that they place on the system. So that may be a way, you know, just kind of like-
That sounds smart, because also, right now, we have a guidance number that we've never formalized, but it's guidance of no more than twenty-four kids in a classroom before we split. So you have WPS coming in, three classes of twenty, and what we could say is, twenty is our limit per class, per school.
Mm-hmm. For the time being. And all of these are flexible. If something happens, if it turns out that we drop this soon for, for incoming for next year to fifty-five hundred, and then we got so many kids in that we've, you know, okay, then next year, we go immediately back to seventy-five hundred. It's not something, I don't think there's a time limit on this, you know, if it turns-
Well, but the problem is, I mean, you, I, I assume a lot of parents want a commitment that that's their, their group-
Well, for those kids, at least, because then we're not-
I mean, it would be a K-five commitment, I would assume.
Right, right, right. You know, ongoing.
And they would have to plan, I mean, they do ask, I mean, how it works now is they call the school with interest and set up tours and all of that through Kathy and Claire, and then my number's given to go through all the stuff that's not region-focused.
Right.
So that's the scholarships and all of that, but I go through the numbers with them, and they, you know, obviously, if you're planning for one to three children, and you're planning for X number of years, you've got to know your numbers.
Right.
And, and unfortunately, you know, we've got a few that just say, I can't do it, and then we're also hearing the same thing with the special ed, because they are getting priced out for, you know, reading specialists and other things like that. And I, you know, I'm not saying we can expect to, to make a lot of headway in, in that realm, but I do think this is a place where we could.
Well, what we could do, as teachers do all the time, is we can decide at our next meeting, or whenever, that we would drop the price, say, to, if Pat, of course, our educational leader agrees, this is not a bad idea, that we would drop it, say, fifty-five hundred per child, but we'd pilot it at Burnham-
I don't know whether-
To see how that would work.
We'd have to see if that's legal or not, but I think, I think more-
Well, I mean, obviously-
Having Pat be the one who decides where the children go and not burdening WPS if we're-
Well, the caveat has to be, no transportation.
But wait, something interesting you said, when you first said that-
And no special ed.
Wait a minute, folks, hold on, stop. We're not going to decide this tonight, so we have to-
We're just kind of flushing-
I mean, a nice little chat.
But we're going to have a discussion when we decide it.
Well, I just wanted to, to point out, when Valerie first said transportation, I thought, oh, my God, you're out of your mind, but then I realized what, what Carolyn brought up, is that at each perimeter, there's turnaround. And I haven't been on the Washington one in years, when there used to be a transportation committee that I was on, but certainly when Bridgewater turns around at the overlook right at the border, because there is, there are students who really do live right there, that would be a point where we could coordinate with, you know, New Milford, or even the parents who drop their kids off right there and jump on the bus with Bridgewater kids at that border. And there's probably something similar at, at the Washington borders to New Milford, too.
Okay. I mean, these are all things that can be looked at. I would like the finance committee, Val, if you're willing to accept this, is to look at it as a financial issue and come back to us with what, oh-
Why don't we do it after the budget, and then, then we can put it on the agenda for that meeting and get it, I want to get going as soon as possible, but-
That's fine.
The budget's kind of front and center.
All right.
As long as you have something by June.
I think that's right. I think people are just trying, I mean, ideally, we'd have it for the open house, end of March, early April, but if we don't, you know, we could say it's coming. But we do have people that I said, you know, I'll call you back with updates, and so I just have a list of people that we're doing that for, and then if we do, you know, drum up, I mean, if, if we're going to put a lot of town resources, I guess, into drawing people in, end of March, coordinate with all the realtors and all of that, it would be great if we could launch it then.
Yeah, but you can't make any promises until it's decided, so.
We have a presentation on the sixth, and then we have a conversation on the twentieth, so April, first of April, we would have some, but it, we don't vote until March 2nd on the budget itself. May 2nd.
So maybe we'll see-
We could do, but I certainly wouldn't want to make any commitments, it's just conversation, and it might disappear altogether.
Right.
No, no, I mean, it should be brought back before the board, I expected it could be discussed, and the board will make a decision.
Great. I appreciate your time.
Try to get it done as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, item 10, superintendent's goals, mid-year update. Dr. Costino.
Yes.
Can you explain for the board, for folks who may not understand, what is the process of evaluation?
Well-
Briefly.
Okay, I'll try. We had a, a subcommittee of the board, of four members, who met with me, I don't know, we've probably met at least five or six times, to put in a process on how to be evaluated. So in the past, I would, after June's, stated the schools, meeting with principals, looking at data, seeing our goals, monitoring progress, I would, in, over the summer, with the administrative team, develop goals for the year, present them to the board in either August or September, work on them throughout the year, and then we'd have an evaluation in June. So we're still doing that, but it's a little more formal. So basically, I have my goals, which were put together jointly by the committee and myself, in conjunction with our administrative team, and that's what you have in your packet, okay? It's the packet, it's, it's eight pages, although the end is the attendance policy we wanted to put in there. We also then, parallel worked on not only the goals, but the format on how I would be evaluated. So basically, and that's this, which I believe everybody has, and I also emailed it to you. Basically, we took the Cabe document, which we've looked at, and we pared it down, because it had, I don't know, sixty, seventy areas to be evaluated on, and we felt a couple of things. Number one, it was too long and too wieldy. Number two, it's already March, and we haven't even looked at it. So we said for this year, we would use the document and work with it as a board, so that in June, we can have an eval, a final evaluation based on the document, and then every year after that, we'll use this document in some form to have a written evaluation. So basically, my goals, and I'm not going to go through every one, because I think a lot of it has been touched on. Go ahead.
If you don't mind, excuse me. When do you expect that the board will actually conduct an evaluation? That's going to be in June?
No, okay, sorry. So in, I'm sorry, my dates of total-
That's all right.
No, March, March 13th, we have our board retreat at six o'clock, and then at eight o'clock, we are going into executive session to review my goals and to start to work on this form, which I'm hoping Rebecca will be the driving force to move us through. Because one of the points that I think really need to be addressed as a board, is there are 12 people, and 12 people can have very different understandings of what these mean. So for example, you know, reviews educational needs of the system, we need to come to some consensus, so, so we understand what that means, okay? We're not, you can use this document, we're not grading it this year, you can put your notes, but basically, what we decided was in March, we would do like a run-through to see where we needed a little more work, what we understood, what we still had to work through. In June, and I'm, I gave a list of dates, I had sent them, just with a little more detail of what's going to happen between now and July 1st. In June-
That's one of the handouts, yeah.
Right. In June, there are, you will get my finalized goals in May, even though there may be a couple of changes after that, but I want you to have them, so you're able to have a final goal sheet from me with updates. And then, the two June meetings, I think it's the 2nd and the 9th, you are going to go into executive session those nights without me, with Rebecca leading and the other members of the team, working through the evaluation, so that when you meet with me for my final evaluation in executive session on June 16th, the 19th, whatever that Monday is, sorry, 19th, this evaluation will be divided into 12 pieces, so that every person on the board will be able to give a summary of the evaluation, with maybe two things that you like, and maybe something I need to work on, or maybe nothing you like and everything I need to work on, whatever it is. So that this way, everyone has a voice, so everyone gets used to using this form. Why don't you add to that, Rebecca? Because I don't know where I missed, where are the hot holes that I missed there?
So I think that the important thing that we need to note for this year is that we've sort of been fixing the car when we've been going 100 miles an hour.
Right.
So the evalu, the development of the evaluation tool this year, I think that, you know, my colleagues and I, working with Pat, we've really considered this to be a stake in the ground. And we want to, prior to June, excuse me, prior to June, we want to go through an exercise of how this would be used. So as Pat was saying, we would collectively understand and agree upon what all these pieces mean. And just to elaborate a little bit on what Pat was saying about how we could then deliver it as, as a useful evaluation in June, and this year, it's going to be verbal, with this as a guideline, when she was talking about every person kind of owning a piece of it. So for example, wait, give me my glasses. You know, maybe Rebecca does educational leadership goals, but that's just not going to be my feedback. I will be representing to Pat, to Pat, the board's collective feedback on that. So it's going to be a unifying exercise, but it's also going to be an exercise where each one of us, as the person that she reports to, as the board, has an opportunity to speak and interact with her directly, with all of us present. So we thought that that would be kind of a, a nice way to, to work through this. It's, obviously, as I said, it's a stake in the ground. I think that we worked hard on trying to make it simpler than the Cabe comprehensive, because the, the Cabe tool has to work for a lot of different kinds of organizations, and there are a lot of school systems that have a lot of different types of issues that we don't have, so we didn't want to waste time on that, but we also wanted to make sure that we weren't oversimplifying it either. So when we're looking at this, especially over the next month, we, we're looking for feedback from everybody, like if you're looking at something and you're, you're thinking, that just doesn't make sense, or hey, there's something that I don't even know where it would fit, you know, that's the kind of thing that we're going to need to talk about. The other piece that's important, and this is hopefully something that we're going to be able to address when we go into retreat, is that we need to do our own self-evaluation. Because when you look at the Cabe process, in actuality, when you look at kind of the timeline of the ideal way to get this done, it starts in, in academic year, where, you know, at the beginning of the academic year, the board does a self-eval and does their own kind of goal evaluation. And then based on that, they work with the superintendent, who works with her administration, to develop those goals for the superintendent, and it all kind of works organically. So we're working a little bit backwards and a little bit parallel this year, we're doing a lot of building this year, and we have to keep that in mind as we're working with this.
Okay. So with that said, this is my mid-year evaluation update, okay? Now, when we put this together, we realized that it was very comprehensive, and there were things that we wouldn't have at this point. So I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but I will go through the highlights. The first one, of course, is the most important, when you think about teaching and learning, and it's the curriculum, embedding the 21st century skills, common core standards, the new assessments. This year, under Teresa's direction, the social studies curriculum has totally been implemented. We are really focusing this year and next year on the science standards. They are intense, they are engaging, it's a lot of problem-solving, critical thinking, and we have a lot of work to do. And so at the high school, they're working grades six through chemistry. Lori has done a great job on getting the cur- Lori has done a great job on getting the curriculum online, so if you want to see that, please go there, but as we make changes, the teachers update. We have, with science and math, developed pathways for students to accelerate, so I think that was an issue in the past, and I think we have a good process in place. On Friday, we had a webinar with the college board, which reviewed our PSAT scores, which was really very beneficial. It showed us how to dig deep into the data, to help teachers to go and look at item analysis, where are the errors, what do those errors look like, what are those questions, really digging deep. Our English language arts scores are higher than our math scores, but we know that and we are working on that. As far as the net generation accountability, we have not received those scores yet. Hopefully, they'll be here soon. The one thing I can tell you is that last year, there was a lot of inaccuracies, and I know that Karen and Lori and the team worked very hard to make sure that everything was correct in which data? TCS, that's a teacher course schedule, and so that hopefully, they at least have the correct data. Will it all come out all right? I don't know, but we're waiting to get that information, and I'm hoping it's going to be very positive. We're working on attendance, we are working on attendance. Our administrative team has had a couple of meetings, where we've looked at attendance, we've looked at the protocols, we looked at what each school is doing, so that we are on the same page. I check the attendance every day of all the staff members, to see who's absent, to see if there are any patterns. So we are keeping a closer look, and we have a lot of success, so I'm happy about that. As you know, we are working on Panorama, and at the next Long Range Planning Committee meeting, I think we'll review some of that data. We have a lot going on with STEM, it really is a focus for us. We have great success with Mary Ann Zoller at the K-5. I hear only great things, every time I'm in that classroom, kids are actively involved, they are hands-on, building, making, thinking, producing, and it really is, it's wonderful. It's wonderful to see. So we're very excited about that. We have Makerspace here at the high school, and it's a wonderful room, right over there, that we got a tour of last week from Sheila Gambino, and she will be presenting to you, but in my budget, you will see that we're going to set up Makerspaces at all the elementary schools. So we're very excited about that. You see, we have offered a lot more classes. We also are trying to offer classes on a rotational basis, and having that planned for at least four years, so when kids come in to freshman year, they know what the course rotation will be while they're here in high school, so they know what they have to take what year, because that's really important in a very small school, you cannot offer everything all the time. We continue to have more and more students taking virtual high school. We have had many, many virtual and live speakers, which are listed here. Our kids, as you've seen, have done a great job with video production. Breann Pitt and her group are really fabulous. So there's wonderful things going on. I mean, I'm not going to read all of this to you, but it really is, it's very, very We are developing the Talented and Gifted program. Teresa and her group are working to make sure we have clear criteria for identifying students. Mrs. Zoller is working with the identified students right now, it's a small group, they go across the grades up till 8th grade, so hopefully, in the future, we'll have more students. And again, we had Mind and Emotions, which was a great opportunity for all kids, not just for talented and gifted kids. Karen talked about the digital environment tonight. I think we are really head and heels over most of the school systems in this area. Our technology is seamless, it is a tool in the classroom. We're working with kids not only to be consumers of technology, but producers of technology. I'm happy to say that Burnham has worked this year very closely with a consultant, Linda Sloan, who I believe you met, Teresa and Mrs. Kalella and the staff, so they have worked on a K-2 model, and I'm very proud of them for being open and ready to make some necessary changes, and to really embrace, embrace the new possible configurations. I'm going to be presenting, not a big deal, but on April 17th, the staff roles and responsibilities, that you could see what people do in the administrative team. Very excited about the RAMP model program. This is a big deal, you know, I can't tell you how much of a big deal it is. We're only the second school in Connecticut to receive this honor. We had Womago here on Friday, their whole special education guidance team was here to learn from the Shapag team, because of our reputation, and that bodes well for everyone. And I think that's one of the selling points when the kids come from Sherman especially, that parents and families and students are getting that individualized attention, to help them prepare for life after Shapag. So I'm really excited about that. And we are participating, we always participate in all of the health initiatives, the mental health initiatives, social and emotional wellness initiatives that happen in the Litchfield County area and in the Western County area. We are hooked up with WestCon, where they have a, I'll call it a mobile group, or they're able to mobilize mental health, staff members, professionals, who have been vetted from the schools, from the community, if there's ever a problem and you need to bring in counselors or social workers or psychologists. So that's something that we've worked very closely with. We do the same thing, there's a Northwest Health Coalition that Todd and Ally attend up in Litchfield County, and that's really important, to be proactive if there's ever a problem, you know, we know what to do. So that all comes under, there's a lot of things that come under the guise of the Guidance Department. Communication and marketing, I think we're doing a really good job here, it can always get better. I was very proud of Karen and her presentation tonight, and also the newsletter that went out in November, got a lot of positive press about that. And, you know, if people want to know what's going on, it's easy to know what's going on. You could see, we have a lot of Facebook followers, trying to increase our Twitter followers, we have YouTube and cable access, so I think we do a really good job there, but as always, we can improve. And again, communication, I just said. The AgSTEM, it's been AgSTEM all the time, it kind of takes up, I would say, at this point, 80% of my time, trying to continue to work with DAS, to mobilize what needs to be mobilized, to get information out, to work with the state, and I thank in advance all the people who are going up on Wednesday to testify, and for everyone who has sent in a testimony, you certainly can do that. I sent you the email, edtestify.com or something like that, but if you need it, just let me know. It's important. It's important that the legislature here, and it's important that they stick to their word as best they can, where they've told us to move on, get shovel-ready, you know, you have a year delay, and do what's right for kids. So we're pushing, we are pushing. And I want to thank Kim Gallo, Kim works very hard on that, to make it happen, a lot of people do, there's a lot of volunteers, but, you know, it's a big job. And then NIASC, NIASC is, although they only come every 10 years, it's a, what's the word, dicentennial, dicenial?
Decennial.
Decennial, thank you, cycle. And so now, this year, we'll be doing our two-year report, giving them an update, and then there'll be a five-year report. After each report, they tell you if you need to do things, if you need to make adjustments, and of course, we'll give them an update about the science labs, and, you know, that we're on the project list with the state, so that's one of the high points of NIASC, and update them on the new curriculum areas, the PD, the science standards, all of those things. And then I just put in there, just so you can see, you know, we instituted for the attendance, I'm going to say a year ago maybe, or maybe it's two years now, about loss of credit at the high school for unexcused absences, and I think that now has started to sink in. In the past, you could be absent, come in and take tests, and it didn't matter as long as you were passing and doing your work, but now attendance counts, it should always count. Not that it didn't count, but no one was really watching it. So we are watching more carefully, students are here, it's important for them to be here. So that is my mid-year evaluation report, as best as I could do it.
Anthony, yes?
Pat, I noticed on number 10, Todd's area, something that jumped out, we talked about taking a look at one of our neighbors to do a comparison, to see what we can learn, and it looks like Todd did that with Taft, and there's some targeted, some things he has in mind to implement based on his learning. Can you give us just a quick flavor of what that might, some of those things might have been?
I honestly cannot, but can you, Lori? Do you know?
I do know that he met with them, and I do know that he compared the things that Taft does, which are very, Taft is very college boy.
Right.
They don't present, they don't pass it to them, it's kind of them.
That's true, he did speak about that.
They have their own priorities. But, some of the things that they do, compared to their college, we saw, we brainstormed with them and see what sort of areas, that's what I'm.
And, you know, it's nice to see that pride, you know, and being recognized, so I'm very excited for them, I really am.
I just want to follow up, Pat, with the AgSTEM update. You were just giving us a little bit about the state meeting, and I know you had sent us some email about that too. As far as you know, board representation at that meeting?
Yes, Michelle Gore is going to the meeting. This is this Fri-, this is Wednesday, this Wednesday.
Right.
Michelle Gore is going, Kim Gallo, Bob, Karen, Ken Schultz, a couple of other parents. We have, I would say at this point, at least 500 to 600 people who have sent testimonies. Ken Schultz, who's the PTO president at WPS, has a letter with over 200 signatures from parents, so we have some good representation.
Great. Jim, would you consider sending them a brief letter on behalf of the entire board? You know, obviously, we took the vote, and I'm assuming they're going to hear about the support from our official vote, but I'm wondering if a letter from you on behalf of the entire board of our support for the program?
I could do that. I know you can communicate in writing to them, and I will do that.
Great.
I can't go on Wednesday, but there's a Cabe Day on the Hill.
I'm not asking you that, yeah.
Then I'm going to try to go, that's on the 8th.
Great.
Next week.
And then, from what I understand, Pat, the deadline is tomorrow at 5:30, so if we're.
Right.
If any of the board members are considering sending an email.
He wants to write it, send it to me, that'd be great.
Right. But we can send an email as long as it's before 5:30.
Yes.
Thank you for that, Mike, I will do that. Anybody have a problem with that? All right, I'll help you, I.
It does not have to be a long letter, you know, they're just looking for how many letters they're getting for support, okay? It does not have to be, mine was one page, short and sweet, told them what I wanted, told them why, and got out of there.
Peter?
I wouldn't say unanimously.
Hmm?
I would not say that it was unanimous. I wouldn't say that, so I'll see how I say it. Anyone else? For Dr. Costino.
Well, I think we're almost done, so I want to like just say what Dr. Costino has outlined here, and tonight was, I think, a great meeting. There are some meetings that are fraught with all kinds of things to decide, or to fight about, or to learn about, that are not necessarily as invigorating as what we learned about tonight. I mean, the presentations, from music to tech, to, you know, even Citizen trying to boost attendance, to Pat's, you know, comprehensive, you know, basically, you know, peek into what's been going on. It's really great, and that's what the board is here for, is to learn about these things, and to have a good two hours of it is really satisfying, so thank you. Thank you, and thank all of you administrators who are here.
For the staff, that Michelle Gore told me she's very sorry she missed the presentations that, you know, she's involved in putting together and knows how much work goes into them, and she's, she felt very badly that she missed tonight's meeting.
For good reason. She's at the hockey game, it's senior night, you know.
I understand that, and her husband's the coach, right.
And her daughter's a senior.
I understand. Is there anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, and I'm glad to hear all this wonderful, good optimism, and that's wonderful, and it's a very impressive list of goals and accomplishments. However, is there any way we can all look at our, we're spending, we have quite a few meetings booked, and we have all the budget meetings, and some of us are up for reelection, God help us, and we have just a full grouping of meetings, a lot of which are very important about Pat's evaluation, but is there a way we can condense some of these meetings? I'm very selfish about that, I know, but, man, May is just jam-packed, and then we do a lot in June, is it?
I don't have my list with, oh, you have the list, sorry. I, may I?
I mean, if we really bend into it, can we eliminate a meeting or two?
Well.
And really cover what we need to cover, that's the most important thing.
15, 20.
And our self-evaluation, the board's self-evaluation, well, we know we're perfect, so I, you know, that should be sufficient.
I think that's really important, personally. The only, on 6-5 and 6-12, those are meetings anyway, we could certainly cancel one of the executive sessions if you can get it all done in one night, I don't know if that's possible.
Is it possible to do the final eval and executive session on June 26th instead of the 19th? I mean.
June 20, you want to go another week? June 9?
Yeah, June 26th is late in the. Very selfish reasons, I'm not going to be here on the 12th nor the 19th.
Okay.
Of June.
I think we should start a FaceTime.
Yeah, Skyping.
Could do that.
When we talk about the schedule, I would just sit in the third evaluation being on campus.
What date are you looking at?
April 3rd.
Oh.
We could have that treat.
Right.
Are you up for your call? Oh, I was going to, you know.
Yes?
What?
I was just talking.
It's okay with me.
We're still in a meeting.
Let me look at it.
It's too noisy and crowded there.
Okay, I'll look, and I'll see what I can do. We do a lot of work, though.
I know, I know.
We have missed so many education meetings that I have to like, that's why tonight we had all of these to try to catch up.
Yeah.
That was a good meeting. Is there anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
So.